Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg Homin Council. Today is the 25th of September, 2023. We are calling our council to order and we begin by prayer and pledge allegiance. So if you would like to stand, I will pray. We will have a prayer and pledge allegiance. Our Father, we vow before you to thank you for the day you've given unto us, Father. You are Creator of heaven and earth, and you created us in your image. And, Father, we just bow and thank you for the days you've given unto us. They are a gift from your hand. We thank you for all that is here. We thank you for our city, Scottsburg. We thank you for our state, India. We thank you for our country, America. Father, we pray for your presence, for your blessing. Father, this is Young Kipoor. This is a day of atonement. This is the day that Israel nationally asks for forgiveness. And, Father, we choose your forgiveness, Father, of our many malfeasance that come upon us. So, Father, we pray for your presence, bless us to stay with your presence. Rest in peace, in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next topic on our agenda is our roll call by our point treasurer, Jan Hart.
Mayor Rainick?
Here.
Chris Howardson. Bill Hoblen.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rowe.
Here.
Point five on our agenda is approval of the minutes from September the 11th, 2023. We'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Does anyone?
I think most should approve.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chuck Rowe's second. Did you see any questions? Anything, questions, comments about these? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Yes, thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is the public hearing to develop a block grant water program. So if, please come up, please come up. We'll sit here.
All right, good evening, council. Mike Klein here with Klein Peter Consulting Group. I'm an OKR certified grant administrator. I'll be assisting the city in our application. Notice this public hearing was posted in the Cuthbert Field Times on September 13th. This is our first public hearing. We will be, in the newspaper ad, we anticipated a grant amount of $700,000 with $800,000 of matching ads. We were still fine tuning the cost estimate at that time. We are here before you today to tell you the final numbers for that project. We will be applying for a grant of $700,000 with a local match contribution of $345,000. Those matching funds will come from the wastewater operating fund. We have a proposal due to OKRA on October 20th. OKRA will then come out in November, do a site visit with the mayor, talk about the project, and then we'll have an application due on December 22nd. Award announcements will be around Valentine's Day next year. OKRA grants are competitive. You have to reach a score of 450 to be eligible for scoring. We went through the score sheet with the mayor and Chase and think we have a competitive project. We think we will be above 450. What OKRA does is they score them and then they just start funding and going down the list. So you don't know how many points you have to have, but you want to score as high as possible. If for any reason the city isn't successful, we can just do two public hearings and come back in the June room. OKRA will come out and do a site visit. With that, I'll turn it over to Scott to tell what about the project.
Scott's cycle with Midwestern Engineers. We've got some maps and there's a cost estimate on the back of here. This is not a pictorial that I'll walk through with everyone just so we can see the project area, what we're looking at doing with this project. And we can answer any questions that hopefully answer your questions at this time. Anyone here? I'm going to just take one of these and then pass the rest around. Okay, keep moving. This first image is the project area that's envisioned. The sewers in this area we'll get to on the second sheets are mostly clay sewers. So they're vitreous clay pipes which have been in the ground for upwards of 50 plus years. After coming down and meeting with Chase and going through the areas of town that he sees with his team as areas of needing improvement, this is an area that definitely needs improvement to kind of combat infiltration and inflow issues. During rain events, the lift station that is on the far west side of, I'm sorry, the east side of this at the old landfill site sees surcharging waters. There's not CSO events, but there is sewer surcharge area back up into these neighborhoods which could lead to homes being backfilled with sanitary sewage, which is not a good situation for residents. The second image, basically what we have done is blown that image up and turned the sewers on. The yellow highlighted areas are the areas that we're targeting for lining those with a cast-in-place pipe. So basically, the way that process works, the sewers bypass and the construction is they pull a liner into it, blow it up, and basically give you a new pipe within the existing pipe. So it's fairly less intrusive than a full-on construction where we're opening a trench and replacing incoming. The other advantage is it's a little bit quicker and it's less costly than full replacement. The third image is the second half of that. So the project area covers 31, kind of splits it in half. The northern edge being Copeland and then the southern edge being around York Road in this image. Same thing that's happening on the east side and the west side, blining those existing sewers. The last sheet that is involved there is what our opinion of probably the cost will be for the project. And that's where the total project cost of $1,450,000 comes from. $700,000 from the grant and $345,000 from the match from the city.
Let me say this as well. The city is still in great order with IM, our plant, not all kinds of standards. Like the state is very much, given our standards, the plant is a lot because of what we've done. But we've already lined over 23,000 linear feet, am I correct, Chase?
We used 22,000.
22,000?
Over 22,000, I believe.
Approaching 22,000. And this is $32 a foot?
$38.
$38 a foot. So we're trying to prioritize this and we're trying to find as much, as many spent funds as we can. And we had a great opportunity. So I want to make sure that we brought in all the guys and we continue. Because a lot of these lines are 80 years old and the lining process is absolutely amazing. And so we wind up.
Beautiful question, the match, city match, just to verify. I don't know if this question is necessarily to, but the RBA funds that we appropriated, that is serving as the match, do you want to?
Yes, that's what our campaign is.
Okay.
That's what we do more than our budget.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I know we approved that last council meeting.
And I will add too, I mean, this is top priority for Scott for the waste water. To get this line, this affected area here, it's all contemplated. Line this and the station upgrade will be totally.
We've got a plan that they will handle, 2.7 million, Chase?
Yes.
And what's the storm work time?
The weather now.
During the storm work?
Well, I've seen heat from four and a half right now. That's just what we get here. But I mean, we're still on grid or by them. So anything we do here is going to help alleviate the residents of the overflow.
Absolutely. So we want to thank Midwestern. It's been just such a wonderful job of Scottsburg through building the plant and now also now the field and the collection system. It's just huge. So thank you so very much.
Mike just wrote six grants to OKRA. Sorry, Mike just wrote six grants to OKRA and they were awarded 13. It's pretty good. That's awesome. That's awesome. He got six.
So as you know, this is this clay vickers pipe. It's kind of glazing outside. You can well imagine if it's 50, 80 years old, you know, it's got cracks and it's leaking. So that's a big thing. I can use much of that out.
As far as the life of the lining compared to conventional good pipe in my head, how does it affect the house of life?
We assume it to be the same majority as new plastic.
Correct.
Yeah, the biggest issue we would have would be the same issues you'd have with plastic. So if there was something that were to crush it or something along those lines. The good thing about lining is you're not disturbing the ground around it. The only time it's usually not successful is if you are missing section of pipe. And that's something we don't know without.
Till you get in.
Till you get in there, correct. And usually what happens on those locations is it'll be a spot repair and then the lining will get pulled through.
Chase, we have agreed orders on the collection system.
For the same issue of the flow.
Wait for my client. So this will have to be done anyway. How will we fund it? It's going to be done.
And we recently finished up some lining on the west side of 31 at the Woodlow Noak area. We have seen a reduction in our, their drain orders. It doesn't make a difference.
And Chase, does this come with a 50-year warranty?
I don't know about the Wolf's Day.
I mean, from the last company, I thought that's what they did, correct?
I don't want to speak because I'm not familiar with the project. So I don't want to say yes or no.
I know we went down, Chase and I went down to New Albany because they bought their own equipment. And they were saying that, you know, they've been filming there since seven years and they saw no interference or any problems with that. And they told us 50 to 100 years. So it's so much better than digging everything out. Absolutely. So what questions in council?
I have a completely random question. This is totally unrelated, but I'm going to put Mike on the spot here. So you deal with a lot of OKRA grants?
Correct.
So there was some discussion, I'll say hearsay, about publicly owned utilities not being eligible for OKRA grants. Let's use broadband, for example, because the city of Scottsburg is only one of a couple publicly owned broadband. Are you aware that OKRA or the state does not allow that to be the case?
I haven't heard them and I'll check for you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, Martin?
Yes, I have one question from beginning to end. Can you estimate how long this project will take?
OKRA requires we're done in 18 months from the time of award.
It could be faster than that, if that's the worst case.
I would say construction in this instance would be, I would give it probably a summertime, three to four months. And that's, you know, obviously weather plays into that. If there's high flows, you know, that's, and supply, that's something we've seen recently. Is supplies really push the contractor, the schedule out. But I would say that a project of this size could be done in the summertime.
Thank you.
We completed everything a while ago. How long did this last last?
I think it kind of dragged out until the water project is set up.
I mean, it's been a good issue. Anything else? Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I presented Mr. Josh Stinkin some forms we'll need you to sign there. Not, I don't need those tonight, but just we will need those to be able to submit on the form.
Well, thank you so very much for your help and we hope it goes very positive.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda this evening is public comment time. City Scottsburg, Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and say your name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their remarks and report about issues about used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone here this evening would like to come forwards during our public comment period? If so, come in. Everybody want to come forward? Go ahead once, go ahead twice. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is new business. Chris Whitman with the Scott County Heritage District.
Yes, Martin, here.
Okay, we'll put him on the end.
Just put him on the end of the table. Michael, careful, this and the others.
Mike's been doing.
Well, I think he might want to have the mayor's assignment. If you're going to need these before the next council, I understand. So Mike, do you want to give overview of the forms you gave me?
If you don't mind, I'll take a look at them. All right, council. So the first form authorizes me to be able to take public hearing minutes from the discussion tonight. The second form is called a disclosure report. It authorizes the city to submit a grant for $700,000. Mayor signs at the bottom. The third one is called a FFATA. It's a Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act. This says that the city did not receive 80% of its revenue in grants and the city did not receive more than $25 million in grants last year. The next one is a four factor analysis. This looks at a census table and it tells us whether we have to post our newspaper ads in a language other than English. We do not meet the requirement for that, so therefore we do not have to post ads in a language other than English. And the last one authorizes me to submit a proposal.
We can get authority from the mayor. Actually, we can note that in minutes.
So do we need to make a motion to go forward and have the mayor sign, please? I'll make that motion. Rick Mans makes the motion. Is there a second?
Ben, Josh is. I am. Yeah, he gives me. I'm going to say no. Yeah, I'm good.
You are good?
I'm good.
So Chuck, did you second?
I did.
Chuck seconded. Any questions, comments regarding this? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much. Okay, next we have on our agenda this evening is the street closure for downtown Trick or Treat. Chief and Jill, let us know what you have in store for us. I hope it's a lot of fun like we've had the past two years.
We did the same streets that were last year. The streets were listed in your packet. It's State Road 56 and First Street, State Road 56 and South First Street, Second Street and Wardell, South First and Cherry, South Main and Cherry, West Wardell and Railroad, State Road 56 and South Main, State Road 56 and North Main, Railroad and Minor to North Main.
Chief, what do you have for us? That's what they had last year. Okay. So there's. You all right with it? Yes. Counsel, okay? We'll have a, we have a motion then to go forward and to close the streets that were indicated here this evening for our children in Scott County and neighborhood towns.
And that's on Halloween night, correct?
On Halloween night.
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion. Street closure, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Questions, comments? Rick Nelson, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much. The next thing is our second reading of ordinance 2023-22 dash, or 2024 budget. For the 2024 budget, second reading, to have a motion to pass this ordinance for the 2024 budget.
I'll make that motion.
Rick Mans makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Any questions or comments about the budget? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much.
Do we need to suspend the rules?
Please, yes, it has to be adopted tonight.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
We have a motion by Rick Mans, president of council, to suspend the rules and go forward. I'll second. Bill Hoblen seconds that. Questions, comments? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll take a motion to go forward and suspend the rules and pass on them.
That's fine, I'll make that fine.
This is an option.
Please suspend it.
Sorry. So we have a motion.
We do it.
Chuck Rose, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Questions, comments? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much.
Council, please don't leave tonight without signing this. I'll pass it, but I have to get that uploaded tomorrow. Thank you.
Ordinance 2023-22 for the 2024 budget passes on all three areas. Thank you very much. Next is the first reading of ordinance 2023-24, an ordinance establishing a purchasing and conflict of interest policy related to federal funds and projects. Is there a motion to pass this on first?
What brought this about? You know, we, is it something we haven't had or something changed or?
A little bit of.
A little bit of. A little bit of.
Consultation with the state's warrant accounts was something.
Oh, that's right.
As my understanding, they were on, the state was on it based upon some of our funds and some of the things of federal policy that you have to adopt when you're doing with federal funds. And that's something that's being passed on down to the local entities during this year's round of audits. Now, happy report, the state local accounts has approved this ordinance in the format of tense.
They have.
They have.
I'll make the motion.
We'll keep that email. We'll drop that email.
Yeah, you're angry. I'll make the motion with 31 for three.
Chuck Rose makes a motion to approve the ordinance 2023-24. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds. Questions, comments regarding this? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Council, per three.
Josh, is this?
Totally up to you guys.
It's not something that needs to be pushed.
No, I'd like to look at it a little closer. I mean, I read it with my good eye, but.
You like up on two eyes, huh? No, it's not funny. It hurts me.
I know. It hurts me. R getting crushed, R. All right.
We're thankful Chuck still has his sight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go down to the next ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution 2023-R-12. A resolution accepting certain street rights, certain street rights that are dedicated to the city of Scottsburg, specifically Julian Lane.
Yeah, before we vote on this, I would like to just touch on it for a second. So this is something that I had worked on with Jill and Josh prior to this obviously being on the agenda tonight. So we had discussed with the community crossings grants, which Jill has done a great job of, there being a couple streets within the city, specifically in my district in which I identified Julian Lane as a gravel road towards the end of Julian Lane. So notified Jill of that and if we could get that on the community crossings and with Josh then discuss some of the issues that we have handled from redevelopment question just to, if he wants to touch on those.
Yeah, so one of the things that when you have to, if you look at the property on the GIS, Julian Lane appears as all the other city streets as being already the city street. So one of the things that we have to look at on the inventory is if there was a plot that we actually formally adopted in the past. And that's why when Jill's did her part with the end dot, we have to have to get the funding from the community crossings grants bill paid those. So redevelopment, there is some land that is potentially developable. There are several residents along that lane already. Thought it would be a good investment to get that road up to code. And obviously the residents around it, you know, having a capable roadway or it was an emergency school bus, you know, all that good stuff that was capable of those things. So redevelopment did fund for a survey to identify the exact roadway setting. And then after after those legal documents and those neighbors have signed, there was, Mark Gardner, when he did the survey work, there was already easements called for and all those needs and just actually hadn't ever been adopted by the city. So here we are, I think Dogwood Lane or some of the others. We've had several streets that have came to our attention in the last several years that are exactly the same situation. So this is just, hopefully, I think maybe one of the last ones that we've identified at this point that we've got to get adopted. So the resolution just calls for that legal description and is drafted by Mark. And we are, actually, we already do have all the signatures of all the surrounding owners and they have them reported. So this is where we do it.
What questions, what questions do you have for our legal counsel regarding any of this? Okay, no questions, then we will accept a motion to pass resolution 2023.
This is my reason.
Sorry.
Terry. Why are they doing Julian Lane? They sent me a letter because I live at 799 West Woodlow Road and my property comes right real close. Did not sit on that road, but why are they redoing Julian Lane? Does it need favor?
Yes, yes, it does. Yes, it does. And just like what Josh said regarding the ingress, egress coming in off of that property, the city will now take that over and maintain that for the residents there and for future developments. In other words, if you want to develop your property there, you would have the right to be able to do so.
And you did receive notice at first because if you'll look at your property on the GIS, which is the county map, your back, your southern, southwestern line actually touches what the city or the county has designated as Julian Lane. But when the site work was actually done, your property doesn't come all the way back to the traveled roadway. So that's why you, on the front end, you received that notice, but it actually did not come all the way back and touch the roadway.
It's real close, 50 foot.
It does come real close.
It was within 40, 50 feet.
Yes, exactly.
Actually, maybe, maybe close to net. One way is probably, the way it is, probably maybe two foot.
Yeah, you're right. I saw that too. I was out there, so. Does anybody else have any other questions about this for council? Okay, we have a motion and a second, is that correct? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion. Is there a second? Bill Hoblen seconds. Any questions, comments regarding this? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much.
We have a sweep reporting.
It's always going to have, it needs to be reported.
Okay.
Resolution 2023-R-12, resolution passes tonight. Next we have our agenda is resolution 2023-R-12A, accepting certain street rights of.
Next one.
Sorry. I dropped that one off. Next is ordinance. Next we have first reading of ordinance 2023-25, an ordinance to repeal and replace Article 72 of the City of Scottsburg Code concerning the rules and regulation for parks and other recreational areas in the city of Scottsburg, Indiana.
I've read through that. I guess my question is why are we, is there, was there glaring omission or something? No, well, the current code is about, addresses about two items. The numerous, and I've talked to Scottsburg Police Department on several occasions. We've had some activity this summer of, I guess, inappropriate behavior in parks would be a fair way of putting it, led to some arrests. And in looking at our city code, this is an effort to, I believe Jerry's reviewed this as well, to look at it, kind of giving us a little bit more authority, making it clear what can and cannot be done and also giving more direction to the police department on the behavior that we expect at the public parks. Okay. I read through it and I didn't, it doesn't say what we've added or changed. You know, just, well, not that I can remember off the top of my head. I have since I read it, but I just wondered what was, and chief, we need this?
Yes, definitely.
Glenn, I'll make a motion to.
Root man's makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. I didn't see anything in there that I thought was out of line as far as the expectation in our parks.
No, I agree. I agree.
Chuck Rose makes a second. Go ahead, Dan.
Terry, talking about security lights, street lights?
No, sir, this is, this is a resolution on the parks.
Oh, okay. On the parks. Because I was going to ask you about Woodlow Road. Would you have that because it's Jackson County R and C. You all would do it and they had to arrive.
That's Jackson County R and C, you're right. Chief, do you have anything else on this one? No, sir. Okay, good deal. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, are there any other questions? Here and now, if you ever say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, thank you very much.
Do you want to motion to suspend or you got?
I would like to stay. I'm pretty sure you can put that as finally. Because I would like to look at the fines.
Because I would like to look at the fines.
First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six passes on first read. Thank you very much. Next we go to first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Orders to establish annual compensation for the mayor, clerk treasurer, and council members.
Who went to twenty-seven, eighty, twenty-six?
Oh, sorry. First reading of ordinance, have too many marks on it, listing. First order, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. And orders to establish the wages and salaries for employees of the city of Scottsburg for twenty-four. We have a motion to pass on first reading of orders twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-six on the wages and salaries.
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Christian Evans, seconds. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Question?
Yep, yes.
Does this reflect an increase in wages?
It does.
Can you give me the percentage so it bears? From the hospital.
A lot to little. A lot to more, how about that?
I think we have a motion and a second.
Motion, second, any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now, all three say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis, thank you very much.
Is there a minimum that we can give? That we can state a considerable minimum amount, minimum percent?
Was there?
Like rates?
Minimum percent of rates?
Four percent.
Four percent is the minimum. Does that help?
Yes, it does.
So do we have a motion?
You would like to suspend.
Yes.
I'd send an email to council.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
The man makes a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll say it.
Ask him, okay, Chuck Rose, seconds. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now, all three say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis, thank you very much. So we have a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, twenty-six. On second.
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second? Second. Bill, hold on a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now, all three say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis, thank you very much. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six, an ordinance to establish, establish wages and salaries for the employees of the city of Scottsburg, twenty twenty-four passes on all three readings this evening. Next is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. And orders to establish annual compensation for mayor, clerk treasurer, and council members and council president of the city of Scottsburg for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. So motion passes on first read.
I'll make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Christian Evans, second. Questions, comments, concerns? Yep.
Once again, I would ask, do you have a percentage available on increase?
Four percent, just like the minimum.
Okay.
The minimum.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I made the motion.
And Christian, second, yeah, Christian seconded, so we're ready for vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rule, passing second, if you would allow it.
Christian. Christian Evans makes a motion, Chuck Rose, seconds, questions, comments, concerns? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis.
No, I mean, passed by Todd only, so.
Bill's making a motion. Bill made a motion.
I can second it.
And Root man is seconding it, so. Any questions, comments, concerns, passing this, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven? No, all three say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan, we're all working on the budget, salary, those kinds of things.
Working on this on budget and you all also won't be here next year. Then we're probably missed, as I told you. The process very smooth. And we're glad that we have money to work with.
Yes, we are deep.
Yes, we are in very financial shape. You all are leaving it, yes, this, the ones that will be leaving the council, Doug Redd are. Very fiscally stable.
Next is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, and orders amending the zoning maps of the unified zoning ordinance now in effect for the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. Is there a motion to go forward and pass this on first read?
I can talk about it for a second.
Like Carmen.
Please.
Okay, this was presented last week at A B C. As you guys saw, this was seven Sunday through Moon Glow Road. The applicant is asking to go from B to general business to R two, two family residential. Essentially, this would allow for either duplexes or single family homes. At this point, we sent out legal notices and we did not receive any information back from anyone. There was no one opposing it and it received a seven oh vote from the planning commission for favorable recommendations. Chris Long is here, though, he is the owner's engineer and he can, can do anything you want to. You're welcome to, and if you have any questions, he's here for us as well.
I'd like to hear what the proposed project is.
Good evening, Chris Long, I'm representing Keith and Doug Henderson, who, their mother owns the property. It's about, approximately about five acres worth of property there. And their intent is to, it's, I think, as talking on today, we've kind of decided to go with a more of a duplex type of subdivision. There's some right behind there that are very similar to that, the, what we're doing. With the layout that I have, it'd be about ten lots, possibly eleven, just kind of depends on some stormwater and utility stuff. So approximately twelve, it'll be at, right now, twenty rental units duplex, you were, you know, so, you know, condominiums on each side and then the garage in the middle. So that's, that's kind of the intent as it is right now. And I don't know if there's any other questions.
Yeah, if there's like us, there's duplexes right behind it, it's, it's the ones that, I think it's fifty-five and over community, is that correct?
Right, Scott Valley Drive, across the street is Timber Haven.
And it's very similar to the area around it.
Where's this at?
Behind the V A hospital.
Behind the V A.
Behind the V A hospital is. Is the Scott Valley Apartments.
Right, and so that'll be right next to us. Does that make sense here?
But these aren't like, we see your housing, this, they want to run.
At this time, yes, we, I think we put in restrictions on, on over.
I just didn't know what target.
You said earlier, apartments amended, not thirty-six, like you said condominiums.
I apologize, so it is, it is more of like a duplex condominium type of thing.
But it's not ours, if it's rental.
At this point, yes. Now, I, you know, I mean, it, it depends on how things progress. But I mean, it could be that they start selling those off as well. But I think they're looking at, at more rental type of property.
Rental start out with?
Yes.
Does this, does it meet, the lot side meets with structure?
Yes, we, we are either, either at or above all of the ordinances for a R two for this type of structure.
What do you know about the drainage problem, sewage problem? I, I'm the seven acre next to that lot.
Okay.
I know when they built the duplex, the senior housing back there, my woods got wet.
Is this something that you guys can get together with or something?
Yeah. This is something that'll come back again to the planning commission, you'll get another letter whenever they want to build subdivisions and that'll be whenever they address the drainage.
And this is just for the zoning.
And it will have to get drainage approval from Board of Works as well.
So amended the zoning maps. What questions do you have for the engineer? Any questions for the engineer? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have in the first reading of ordinance twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, and orders to amend the zoning maps, unified zoning ordinance now in effect for the city of Scottsburg. Any questions or comments for the ordinance? Okay, hearing now, do I have a motion to go forward and pass this on first read?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we pass on first read.
Root man's makes a motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Chuck Rose, seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing now, all three say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamis, thank you very much. Just stop on first read, is that correct?
Correct.
There you go. Next we have.
It will get recorded.
So that comes as passed, you know, it gets recorded, thank you.
We're gonna go back up to the top of our list, Chris Whitman, there you are.
I do apologize for the length, just in that one. Hand you each one of these, please. Don't expect me to re-correct this medically, I'm sure there's nothing I'll stay to do. This is all to do with the Heritage Center and a museum. I'm sure it's dear to your hearts, I just hope it is. I'm here to ask you if you can consider contributing towards the principal of a USDA loan that Preservation Alliance holds for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars currently. We've been making a twenty, twenty thousand dollar payment for the last fifteen years and still have that much money owing. We don't, we're not here to try and run off without paying the debt. It will be paid, but unfortunately I won't be around to see it finished because it's, don't come due till twenty forty-eight. So if you could, if you would consider, after reviewing the papers that I've handed you, there's a statement in there from USDA as well as our current fiscal status, as well as projects and other things that the museum's been involved with. We've had, in the last couple of months, there have been people from twelve different states visiting for various reasons. Some just because they do museums, others because they were checking on their family. We also had eighty children last week from Scottsburg Elementary School come through. It was a challenge for the two volunteers that escorted them around, but fairly illuminating for the children. Anyway, I'm not here to clean poverty or anything like that. I just want you to know that we're in a fairly unusual financial situation. Any help you might be able to give us would be thoroughly appreciated.
What was your original debt?
Well, it's been added to at different times. Like the original debt was just over three hundred thousand dollars. But then we had to borrow more from USDA in two thousand and six to complete the renovations upstairs and for an elevator in and do other landscaping and cosmetic stuff. That's where the additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars came, what it came for.
What's your interest now?
Right now it's four point seven eight, I believe.
Does the county contribute, how, where's your income stream at?
If there were one, it would be sporadic to say the least. We've been fortunate that the community foundations helped us. Some of their benefactors have allocated funds to the museum specifically. The Visitors Commission has very generously allowed us ten thousand dollars per year for the last five years. And between those two, we've been able to just cover the debt payment. But obviously, the building's been open most of the days of the year and it all takes money to keep it open. Well, that's been, we've had barn sales, I don't know if any of you have visited, but last year that generated a little over ten thousand dollars. And donations, contributions, memberships, all of those things go together to add to the fundraising that we do to just try to keep the ships flaking.
I don't know if Austin would contribute, but to me, this has always been kind of a cavity home. And they're not used to have, when they went there, they would work in the fields and.
Oh, yeah. But one interesting thing, well, I, I think it's interesting, you know, NIMBY's not in my backyard. Well, that building was outside the city limits when it was built. And it's because the local residents didn't want poor people or anybody who's got anything wrong with them inside the city limits. So I guess the street, you need to see the future of the history, right?
If you don't have an income stream, it'd be nice to be able to see if we could find an income stream with the county in Austin, Scottsburg. So maybe that's something we could look at.
If you would, I'd certainly appreciate it, as would every volunteer.
Yes, for sure.
Because there's one paid employee and everybody else is volunteer.
Yes.
Regardless of what their work ethic might be. But we all do it because we think it's important and.
It's our heritage.
Hopefully you do too.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you ever been out there lately, it's really, it's really awesome, it's really nice. If you like history at all, this is, this is a good place to go.
But we know you're another farmer's market out there as well, and that's a pretty neat sort of social type of thing as well, it's not just.
Does it generate any money for you at all?
Farmer's market?
Yes.
It's actually five hundred bucks a year is what the farmer's market pays to Preservation Alliance, yeah. Which is a pittance really, but especially if you consider it's a hundred thousand dollar structure.
Yeah, it's a beautiful, beautiful structure.
It is, yeah.
The poor folks home's a beautiful structure as well.
It is indeed, yeah. And it's a good truck that was taken care of because the architect who first worked on it said if it had been left for two more years, it would have collapsed, been on the side.
We don't want to see any more English in the states going down, do we?
No, that was probably a bit of an error.
A big bit.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chris. Next thing on our agenda this evening is announcements. What announcements do we have?
Did you say about the next meeting that you talked to Joe?
Oh, yes, uh, thank you for that. October ninth, right, is our scheduled meeting, this Columbus Day. And City Hall will be closed, right then.
Yes.
On Columbus Day.
Yes.
So we are going to probably need to reschedule that meeting if possible. I saw that on the call in the day.
I'm just trying to get through today.
If we needed to reschedule. Ricky, you all at school that?
Yeah, we have school. So could we make, I know we're supposed to, to look at the new zoning ordinances and the planning commission on the tenth. What time is that, Carmen?
Four thirty.
Do we want to meet later and just try to do that at that time?
Could, I mean, that's possible, on the tenth.
Carmen, what were your thoughts?
Satisfied with me?
Do you like it six P M?
Yeah.
On the tenth?
Yeah, I think.
Kind of looking around.
I think.
Parks Board meets at six, but we can ask.
What meets at six?
Parks Board.
Parks Board, yeah. Is Carmen, the people, are they going to be, that would save us another trip for them to present if we did it that night. Do we pay them, like, the people that were there today?
They have a contract.
Contract? Okay. I'm just trying to save a little money.
Planning Commission meets here, right?
You like the way you pay, Brad?
Planning Commission meets here, though.
Yes.
Supposed to meet after that.
Yeah.
Those that are going to be?
When? When?
Six. Tenth at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six P M.
Parks Board meets. Can we, can they meet at a bar or something, do you think?
They got new rules now. Can they meet at the park?
I believe that they won't get too crowded. The tenth at six o'clock is when we're running in.
So folks, if you're watching from home, is everybody okay with that? We're going to move our October ninth meeting to October tenth, six P M from five P M to six P M. That'll be our next meeting for City Council. Chief, what, what announcements do you have for us, sir?
We just started a new officer, Robert Gudsel, yesterday. He's the veteran officer. He does real well. Only missed training and we're going to get the other officers out on the street and then do them well, get them in training. A little experience and we're back up to the officers that we have and moving on.
Got a full team now, right?
Yes, sir. On your roster. Good, good deal. Good deal. Thank you, thank you.
What other announcements? Halloween is October thirty-first beginning at what time, Jill?
Six, six to eight, I believe.
Six to eight, so two hours. And if you've never been downtown, it is, it's just a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun. Last year we had some critters that were probably fifteen feet tall. I mean, so, and right here, come in. We're going to have refreshments in here or something like we did last time. I don't know. We had some refreshments last time. And bathrooms are warm. October thirty-first is maybe getting a little cool. But anyways, a lot of fun. So come out and just enjoy the kids. Enjoy, enjoy Scottsburg. It's just a lot of fun. So. Any other, any other announcements? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn? So I'm going to adjourn. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.